There you go.
All right, so I will call the special meeting for the Board of Finance to order via Zoom. And we have public comment. You can see the Zoom, right Denise?
Yeah, I don't have anything.
Everybody, everybody here that has to be here, we don't have to see anybody or anything, I don't.
No.
Okay.
I don't think so. I think we're good. We don't have to see anybody, so we can move. You know, public comment. And we're here to. Have a discussion and possible action regarding, we'll start with the municipal spending after the hearing last night. Thoughts, comments?
Yes, Steve, I had a, I wasn't here for the meeting when you guys discussed the cuts. I'd like to reinstate for the. You know, the $5,000 for the lawyers, the council. We had cut it 4,000.
Yes.
What was your, what were your thoughts on all that?
My, my thought after listening to the. After listening last night, I was, I'm inclined to definitely put some money back in the legal. I don't know exactly how much, but. You know, whether it's in the full amount or whether a partial, I definitely thought Greg Marlowe had a good, good point.
That's, that's a different legal line.
It is a different, oh yeah, different legal line, that's what you're getting at, yeah.
Yeah, there were no comments last night asking for reinstatement of that, Steve. And I thought when we did it a week ago or so, were the same ones we had last year. The money's never been spent and we're in a tight situation. And if the selectmen need money for legal expenses, they can get it from us on short order. So that was the thinking.
If the money is not spent though, it just goes back to the general fund.
That's right, but then taxpayers have to pay for it in the meantime.
I, I, this is Amy. And I, I'm not sure I understood this, you John clearly. Did you say you don't recall any request for that from last night's meeting?
No one spoke up about that, that I recall. The only thing I heard about legal fees was from the Planning and Zoning Commission. Steve's talking about the legal expense line for the, for the selectmen.
Ah, thank you very much. I, I personally would move to have some, have some money put back into P and Z's legal line. For many of the reasons that they shared last night, but that's, but we'll, you know, but I know Steve has something else on the table right now.
Yeah, Steve's got the, the selectmen's.
He just, he spoke with, with Judy Jacobs and she mentioned that we have some. Legal fees coming up for the contract for the Old Town Hall for the rental that have not been paid. That, that $300 and an order, $1,000 is not going to go very far and it just seems cumbersome to. To come back. I think that $1,000 is going to be stopped quick.
Well, is there an existing bill from the lawyers?
Isn't that, a bill has not been sent to us yet, but there will be. So there, there is, there is bill, there will be bills in the forecast or coming up soon.
Is there anything other than that bill?
That's the one that we have discussed. That's the one that Judy and I have discussed.
Dave, that's a bill for this year versus, this is not as part of next year's budget. That, that, those fees are something that were generated from this year's budget, correct?
Yes, Dave, Dave has his hand up. I was going to have Dave give us a.
Currently, we have no bill regarding 35 Railroad Street. Though it is something that we have asked, the 35 Railroad Street Committee and I have asked Emily Vale to start to put together. I'm not sure this year if we will be taking any money out of our current legal line. But I can tell you next year, certainly there will be some monies that will have to be taken out.
But won't that come out of the proceeds of the sale, if there is a sale?
Hopefully that's the way it will go, John, but what will happen is, as you all know, that money will go directly to the general fund. And then again, as we move along, you have to remember, we have two separate issues here. One being the easement that we've worked on and the other one being the actual sale. And I think that years ago, when the original sale was supposed to go through, so on and so forth. That we had thought we could take all of them out, that we can't parse the two up. But I'm afraid the sale has not gone through, but we are going to have to pay for certainly the work done on easement.
So my question is, is this not, if the building sells, wouldn't the fees, the, the bill come from the attorney as a standard? As it does with regular real estate. It would come right out of the proceeds and then the lawyer would take their, their cuts, you know, and then the rest of it would come to us. So there really wouldn't be a bill per se.
You're, you're correct on your, I'm sorry Carol, you are correct on your assertion, but again, we have the two separate. Things going on, one being the easement and one being the sale.
Now that easement, is that part of that $5,000 that we allocated for that purpose last time? Last, that I objected to, but we still went ahead and put $5,000 towards that easement?
That was for the, the engineering and so forth to look at the septic system. That was, that wasn't for any legal fees.
Dave, do you have a sense of, if you separate out the fees for the work on the easement? What the amount of the fee would be, any sense at all?
I really don't, John, to be quite honest with you, I'm not sure exactly how many hours were put in between the paralegal and the attorney. So I would be less than honest to tell you that I have a really good handle on it. I would, I would ask if, if. Perhaps not reinstating the full 5,000, but at least half of it at this point in time.
So the easement, this is correct, I'm sorry, John, it's hard when you're on Zoom. That easement, that, that, that comes out of this fiscal year. You can't roll it into next year because that's part of the expenses from, out of, that we allocated for this fiscal year, correct? So.
No, 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 that $5,000 that we looked at, okay, that we reinstated was my regular legal line, just in case it was needed.
No, no, I'm not talking legal line, I'm talking about the. The.
The easement?
Easement, that, if that is part of this fiscal year, correct?
That, again, but that was, that was not for legal fees, that was for the actual study.
Dave, is there any expectation that Susan Sweet Apple will bear part of those fees herself, that will spare them with her?
Uh, not in this particular, not for the easement, we were the ones who agreed to put together the easement.
So that's been put together, but not accepted, so it's just out there, correct? There is no easement per se, it's just sitting out there as part of the negotiating tool for the sale of the building, correct?
Right, at this point in time, it has been put together and our attorney is working with Susan Sweet Apple's attorney at this point in time. So what I'm trying to say, oh, I'm sorry Carol, go ahead.
Well, I kind of misunderstood that because I thought that $5,000 that we allocated was going toward that easement, not the septic. I thought that's what that $5,000 was for, that we wanted to do the, get the easement taken care of. So that it was a good sales tool towards selling the building. I, that's what I thought that $5,000 was for, that's what I'm trying to clarify.
Right, no, that, that had, that had nothing to do with legal fees, it had to do with paying for AEA is looking as the engineer at the septic system.
So how would we, no, go ahead.
Go ahead, no, go ahead Ginger.
I was just wondering, we, we have a discussion on the table in regards to legal fees for the selectmen. Do we want to make an adjustment through a motion or do? We want to move on?
And this is for the line called Town Council.
What's that Amy?
And this is the line called Town Council in 1003. That was moved from 5,000, from 5,000 to 1,000, right?
Yes.
Okay. You know. I, I, again, I have no problem increasing it a bit, Dave, what, you know, if we didn't go to five is, you know, a little, what little bit more would help you?
You know, we'll split the difference, Amy, if we could, you know, we actually, the last year, 24, 25 amended budget was 6,000. If we split the difference and went with 3,000, I would be more than happy to work with that.
And what about 2,500? I know we're getting a little silly, but.
Well, I, I'm willing to work with 2,500, that would be a $1,500 increase over what you gave me.
Okay, so just to get something going, I'm going to make a motion to change Town Council. A proposed expenditure to, from 1,000 to 2,500, just to see where we can, what we can do.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Was that you Tom?
That's me.
Thank you.
Tom Wilson.
I'm entirely sympathetic with paying lawyers. No arguments there, but this, this is all still very contingent. And it doesn't sound like it's going to be a large amount, well under the $20,000 that we can authorize for you. In, in a special meeting within a few days' time. So my sense on this is, since we don't know when we're going to get the bill, we don't know how much it is. Could be more than what we're talking about. My judgment is we just wait and when you get the bill, you tell us and we quick like have a special meeting and authorize the money then. So I'm going to vote against the motion, Amy, for that reason.
No, 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 I just wanted it on the table.
Yeah, do you have any idea at all as to what this bill is going to be?
I'm sorry Carol, you stepped on there as we used to say on the radio.
Do you have any idea, do you have a, any, you have, you don't have a bill in hand, obviously. And when you do get a bill, you don't have to pay it the next day, but do you have any idea what that bill might be? Are you anticipating what the cost would be?
No, as I told John before, between the paralegal and the, the attorney, I'm not sure what the bill would be.
So we could authorize 2,500 and it would be inadequate and Dave would have to come back to us for more. So I'm just going to repeat myself, it seems far more sensible to just wait until we know what we're talking about and pay it promptly.
Yeah, they give you at least 30 days, I'm sure.
I think I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
I think you have to do it by name.
Oh yeah, we'll have to do it by name.
Okay.
So to restate it, all those in favor of reinstating 2,500 to the Town Council line? 1,003, I believe. Tom?
I'm gonna say aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Aye. John?
Nay.
Carol?
Nay.
Amy?
I'm, I'm gonna say nay also.
And I will. I'm gonna say nay at this time too. Thank you.
So some other things we heard were with regard to P and Z and. You know, for, to keep this kind of a thing going, stop me if you want to go in another direction, Ginger. We heard two things from P and Z, one, that they really would like a little bit more money for their, their. Officer and they'd like to have for timeliness and timely response to get good legal counsel. They'd like to have what, what they feel they need for attorney fees. They, they have, I think we have. Attorney fees, we have $1,000 in there right now, no, we have $1 in, in there right now. And so I'd, I'd make a motion to definitely put some money in there, as Greg said, you know, he'd be grateful for anything. Because, you know, they know they can come back for replenishment, but, you know, so I'd like to move that we put $1,000 in there.
Is there a second?
I'll second it just to get the discussion going.
Thank you, Tom.
Amy, this, the motion's just for the legal expense line, not for the planner?
Uh, the, no, it's just the legal expense line for 1-0-1-1 Planning and Zoning Attorney Line. And I just, now that you have a second, I just want to elaborate a little more and that was, it, it seemed very clear to me. That time was often very much at the essence and that even losing a week could be an issue. And so a little bit of money in there will make them more adept and responsive. And in protecting our town, it is a probably one of the most. Exposed portions of our town's operation and I would not want them to. Be handicapped in that way. And I know that I, I did talk to Steve, who's, I guess he's the chair or the, or was, he's on the planning and zoning. And asked him about this other resource that they have, they do have other resources that they use. This one was about the Federation, something that Ruth Mulcahy gave them. And he says they do use resources as best they can, but having an, a, a local attorney that really understands. Our P and Z, our town, our, our particular region. Has proven to be very valuable, rather than having a more generic point of view from the state. So there's, there's my point of view. I also, one last thing is. I know that this body, as well as the Board of Selectmen, are looking forward to being, approaching the whole budget process more strategically. And our whole town's economic picture more strategically and I think P and Z is going to be. I know P and Z will be a very key component there and I'm, you know, I'm, I'm really, I feel. P and Z is a vital part of our, our town's health.
Other comments?
Yeah, I have, I have comments. The timing issue that I think Greg talked about it seemed to me farfetched. They have 65 days to decide they better go see a lawyer. And yeah, I suppose there are scenarios when the problem comes up a day after they've held a meeting. And maybe they can't hold the next meeting and time rolls by and they find themselves with only a few days left. To try to raise money for a lawyer. They should be paying more attention to their schedule. If they think they need money for a lawyer and they've got a 65-day window, it just strikes me as implausible. That they're going to wait until they're just about out of time before they come to that understanding. Now, I'm not opposed to giving the Planning and Zoning Commission a small legal budget. But even though you know my views on, on the legal expense line, I, I regard the Board of Selectmen as. Far more in need of legal counsel than the Planning and Zoning Commission. And I would guess that the agency that Ruth Mulcahy mentioned, even though they might not be ideal. I mean, the problems on the east side of the state are not going to be meaningfully different from those on our side of the state. So as it, just as it, as a spirit of compromise. I would, and I, I think Greg said we'll take whatever we can get, I would give them $500 with the strong encouragement that they spend 150 of it. And sign up, and Ruth said you have to sign up, so I'm not sure that they've really used this agency if they haven't signed up, I don't know.
No, they use a different agency.
Yeah, well, she, Ruth is very experienced in these matters and she seemed to think that this, this organization gave sound legal advice. So I'm willing to put $500 in the line and obviously I can't insist on that, but with the strong expectation that they, that they use. Whatever they need to sign up with that agency. And if they need money over and above that, just like Dave and the other selectmen do in their case, they can come to us. But they shouldn't be presented with these short-fueled situations. If they're paying attention to their business and their schedule, they could have plenty of time to ask us for money.
I would just, I, I don't, I'm, I'm not in total disagreement with what you're saying. I'm, I just respect the fact that planning and zoning is, is very complex evidently. I mean, I, some of you have more information than I do on that. They are all volunteers, just as we are, and I, I think they really do do their best to stay on top of their schedules and things. So I just, I, I don't have any problem amending the amount if anyone else feels similarly.
I think like, like a thousand.
That's what I had proposed.
I think a thousand would be, would be good.
This is, yeah, this is Tom, I don't think 500 to, to a thousand changes anything with the potential mill rate increase. So that, I'm in, I'm indifferent to the numbers really. 500 or 1,000 both work fine for me.
Are we ready to take a vote?
Take a vote without an amendment, I guess.
Without an amendment?
Yep.
So this is $1,000.
A thousand.
Okay.
Ginger, if I maybe just make a point of order, it might be easier to do this. If I'm the only one who wants 500, why don't I make a motion to amend, to amend Amy's motion? If there's no support, then you can deal with the $1,000.
Fair enough.
That makes sense?
So how does that make?
So John will make a, John will move to amend it to 500, we'll vote on that amendment, if it passes, it changes the amendment, if it fails, we go back to the original amendment.
Okay, but somebody has to second that.
Correct.
Okay, well, I, I move to amend Amy's motion, make a friendly amendment to reduce it to a $500 allocation.
And I'll make a friendly second.
Okay, any discussion? And we'll do a roll call, all in favor, so Tom?
So we're voting on the amendment, I vote nay.
Steve?
Nay.
John?
Aye.
Carol?
Aye.
Amy?
I vote nay.
And I vote nay. So motion failed, so we're back to the thousand. We'll do, take a motion on, we'll do a roll call on the thousand, Tom?
Vote aye.
Aye. Steve?
Aye.
John?
Nay.
Carol?
Wait a minute, nay, sorry.
Amy?
Aye.
And I'm going to say aye, the motion passes. For the thousand, so that would be the one amendment.
And, and the next thing on planning and zoning is, you know, and again, I'm just putting this out for discussion because we did hear it a few times. And that is that they, they really feel like they're going to need more than the 26, 160 that they were asked to cut it to. It was, it was cut by, I, I guess that's $3,000. So just for the sake of discussion, I'm, I'm going to make a motion that we reinstate. That what was originally proposed in the 25, 26 budget to 29, 160 for many of the same reasons I mentioned before. About planning and zoning being a very strategic arm of the town.
So you're moving to reinstate the 3,000 that was cut from the.
CEO Planner line.
CEO Planner.
The new line, yeah.
Yep, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Discussion?
I think, when, this is Tom, I think when we had this initial discussion, I was the only one that voted against removing that 3,000. So I would still be in favor of adding a 3,000 back.
Any other discussion?
Well, if no one else has a thought, I'm gonna say what I'm guessing you know my thought is. This was a 25% increase. From last year for the combined planner consultant line. It went from 24 and a little bit more to 30 and a little bit more, so $6,000 on a base of 24, 25% increase. We cut it back to a 12 and a half percent increase. I remain, I know Stephen is on the phone, I'm not trying to offend anybody, but I remained highly skeptical. That we need that kind of money for planning and zoning to conduct its affairs. That's 330 hours of the planner's time, that's almost a full day a week. I just do not accept, do not agree that it is essential for them to have a resource of that size. So I'm going to vote against this.
Any other? Discussion? Now, I'll take a vote. To reinstate the 3,000 for the CEO Planner, Tom?
Vote aye.
Steve?
Nay.
John?
Nay.
Carol?
Nay.
Amy?
Aye.
And I'm voting nay.
Okay, thank you. The other things that we heard, and I don't know, I don't know if I, I would dare to have a motion on this one is. We did hear some very interesting things about the non-recurring capital accounts. You know, I don't really know what to say about that, it is a tough one. Except that. You know, I, I do take a different perspective than some of you, my colleagues. Who, whom I, I do respect, I just have a different point of view about the revenue and expenses for our town. The different perspective I have is that I, I tend to, I tend to take into account trends. So although our, our treasurer, Michelle, is very conservative in giving us what she, the, the least amount that. You know, the state is quoting her of what we will get. I look at several years and, and I, I'm a bit more hopeful than what is projected. And another area is, you know, you know, there's the, the current tax bills. And then there's the past tax revenue and then there's the. Fines and conveyance fees, I think, for revenue as well. And there's one more expense item that I, I. Have a different point of view on too, and that is that the steep grant, should we get it? You know, and I am hope, I, I do hope we get it, I am not hopeful, though.
I assume we've heard nothing on that at this point, nothing, okay.
And I know that we, in order to qualify, we must pay, we must be prepared to spend. Our share, which is 125,000, I believe. My view is that we don't have to do, don't have to allocate that all in one year if it's a two-year grant. And so I would reduce the expense somewhat maybe and do half this year and half next year. So with that different point of view, I'm making an assumption here. You know, I do feel the financial outlook is a little better and that, that we, we might be able to afford. A bit more in the non-recurring capital accounts.
Uh, my question is, I believe, and I, I could be wrong, I don't know if we can split that 100, you're referring to 125,000?
I have a, yeah, I know we've been, I did, I've been, I know we've been told by, by Denise and. I did, I've been, I know we've been told by, uh, by Denise and perhaps, uh, Dave that we can't, um. I would want to check on that because they don't, they don't really, I don't think they care if it's in your budget all in one year or not. They, they're not, that's not what they're looking for. They are looking for a commitment and we've made that commitment. Our commitment is for a two-year period. We can allocate that commitment any way we choose. Again, people may disagree with me, but that's the way I see it.
I think, I think it's been, that my, my understanding is that that has already been allocated as part of the steep grant, so you can't-
No, it's just a grant application.
No, once they approve it, you've automatically, it's automatically, um, allocated.
A- Amy, if I can suggest something, uh, we, we have someone on the Zoom who knows more about that application than any of us, so I think with your permission, I'd like to hear from Denise on that.
Great, thank you, thank you.
Um, the money, the hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars was allocated at town meeting specifically for the steep grant. The whole hundred and twenty-five, you cannot allocate it towards something else unless it's not awarded. You can't split it up one year or the other. It's already allocated to steep, so if we get it, which is what we want, because it's six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars worth of project, you can't, you can't do what you're suggesting, Amy.
Okay.
By town meeting vote.
There's a difference between allocation and spending.
Right.
All right, um, we also have a, I guess a, a time limit here, which I seem to have forgotten.
P and Z is trying to meet with the Zoom.
Yeah, they can't meet until we finish.
I understand that they might wanna meet, but this is critical to the town's life and I don't think we should be pushed aside for a planning and zoning meeting. Sorry, I hope they don't take that personally, but, um, this is more critical.
Maybe, maybe we can speed things along, so, um, we don't hold them up. I, I think this is probably the last issue that we're gonna discuss. Does anybody have? These, these go through all the cuts that we made. I think this is the last one. Does anybody wanna raise anything else?
Um, uh, well, I am just, you know, I'm just, that's the only thing, is does anyone, does anyone else want to make a motion to respond to some of the non-recurring capital account concerns that were expressed?
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm not trying to, uh, end that discussion, Amy, I'm just, just in the interest of time, that, I think that's the only discussion yet to discuss.
Agreed.
So I think we can, if we, you know, don't repeat ourselves, uh, other than to say what our feelings are, I think we can deal with this pretty quickly. Um, we heard a lot of comments last night. Some comments to the effect that people are opposed to tax cuts. Other comments to the effect that the town has an expectation of services and that we could meet it regardless of whether it's gonna result in an increase, um, in taxes. We had one comment that we should just accept what the Board of Selectmen recommended, which I thought was, um, strange given our statutory role to, um, not do that. Um, we receive what the Selectmen and the Board of Ed present to us, but then it's our obligation to think if, if that's in the best interest of the town. So, we were looking for money, let's be honest with each other. Um, we were looking for more money because we asked the town for fifty thousand dollars of cuts and they came up with a little more than ten. And, um, so we then looked for places and I, I could be wrong about this, but I think, Amy, it was, it was your idea to look at the reserves.
Yes, absolutely, you're right.
And so there are lots of things to think about, but one point that was made, uh, which I agree with, I, I don't like cutting contributions to the reserves, cuz I know we're gonna need that money one day and it's just prudent to do so. I also recognize that the reserves by themselves will never be adequate to meet our big expenditures and we will have to borrow at the time, which makes me a little more comfortable in cutting back on contributions to the reserve. Now, we're still making a big increase in contributions to the reserve. Um, but it's twenty-five thousand dollars less than what was asked. I'm not crazy about that, but I'm less crazy about basically ignoring, um, a, a a structural financial problem in town where we spend more than we're comfortable asking taxpayers to pay and depend on surprises or a surplus in the general fund, which is gonna fast disappear. Um, so I, I think we need to be sending a message. I hate to send it through the reserve line, but I wanna send it someplace. We asked for a very modest cut, fifty thousand dollars on a budget in excess of two and a half million dollars. Two percent. Um, and we got one-fifth of that. So for that reason, I, I think we need to exercise some discipline and so, um, I'm in favor of what we did last week. I don't know if there's a motion on the floor, but if there's a motion to reinstate it, um, the cut that we made, I'm going to oppose it for the reasons I just described.
Right, so I was-
We don't have a motion.
So I was gonna, point of order, Madam Chair, I was gonna say that if there is no motion, we've already had lengthy discussion, if there is no motion to change that, I think we can move on.
I agree with Tom on that, cuz I don't-
Thank you.
Okay.
Right.
Thank you.
So, um, uh, are we, may, I'm, I'm gonna try, uh, I'm gonna make a motion to send to t- town meeting the, uh, the amended, uh, municipal proposed spending plan for twenty-five, twenty-six. I think it's just changed by a thousand dollars, if I'm correct.
That's correct.
And, uh, in, I'm also, it to, uh, in that same motion proposing the Canaan Board of Education proposed spending-
Separate motion, sorry.
Separate, so, yep, just finish them all, municipal.
Yeah, okay.
In Amy's motion, I need the dollar amount.
Okay, uh, the dollar amount is, uh, sorry? Um, two million four hundred and twenty thousand eight hundred and twenty-six dollars.
Even, two million four hundred and twenty thousand eight hundred and twenty-six.
Yes. Is that correct? Just one-
Should be five hundred dollars more than what was on the table last night.
Oh, one, one hundred, one-
No, a thousand, right?
One thousand dollars, so it's, I'm sorry, uh, two million four hundred and twenty-two thousand eight hundred and twenty-six.
Yes.
So a thousand dollars was for the legal line for P and Z? Yeah, okay, okay.
Okay, thanks Denise.
The two million four hundred and twenty-two thousand eight hundred and twenty-six dollars recommended to town meeting for the municipal spending plan for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six.
Thank you, yes.
Thank you. A second, please.
Second.
Thank you, Jen. Any further discussion?
Yes, I have a question. Uh, when we present, I guess we present the two separate budgets, the education budget gets presented and then the town budget?
Mm-hmm.
Presented. When that's done, um, one of the things that I heard from the meeting, uh, and I've heard this before, that they don't feel like they have enough information as to what the impact on this is going to be. I know we can't set the mill rate and we can't tell you how many mill increases is gonna cause, but we must have a range based on the numbers that we've gotten from Michelle as to what the difference is and how much of a mill increase would impact them. And I would like to be able somehow let the people know when we're making that motion that we're, this is, this total budget or the total budgets is going to be, we're going to have to increase taxes by one point or one to two point, two mills or whatever, to give them an idea that there is definitely gonna be a tax increase from this, cuz not everybody understands that.
Actually, we, what we usually do is we usually, and correct me if I'm wrong, but we usually at that town meeting, there's also a presentation of the projected revenues provided by the treasurer so that the town, you know, the legislative body of the town members see that. Um, we, we don't wanna say exactly what we're gonna do because the met- meeting exact, that follows immediately after that, we as a deliberative body here, discuss not just raising taxes, but also how much of the general fund, which we'll also know a little bit more information about at that time. So but giving them the document that you're talking about is, at least that is the most information that we can give them.
You can give them a range because we're gonna know roughly, cuz we should know by, we should be able to get from Michelle what her predicted, um, general fund is-
If I can interrupt, though, I hope people saw the, 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 uh, note from Steve Cosburn, they got a room full of people. Um, so we should try to wrap up as quickly as we can.
Yep.
Yeah, point of order, I don't think, I don't think mill rate, I, point of order, I don't think the mill rate is part of the motion, so we can let that go.
No, but you've got to let them know that, not, not the final mill rate, but you can let the pet, people know that there's, you know, based on the information, the numbers we have, at least I as a citizen would wanna know that we have some pretty solid knowledge of those numbers. We're gonna be able to say it's going to impact your, your taxes by at least point eight to one point three, uh, one mill, between one mill and one and a half mills. We should be able to tell people that, cuz we're not stupid, we have the numbers, we know what we're gonna spend.
Right, well, what we say at the meeting is different with the motion.
I would call, call the question.
Call to vote. We'll take a vote on the moving to municipal, moving to, uh, town meeting. Tom?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Carol?
Nay.
Amy?
Aye.
Ginger?
Aye.
Okay. And then I'm gonna make a motion to, uh, uh, present the Canaan Board of Education proposed spending plan as presented um, at the hearing on five twenty-one, uh, for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six.
I need a dollar amount, please.
Uh, the dollar amount is, uh, um, three million nine hundred and thirty-three thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars.
Second.
Any other discussion?
We can't change that, right? We can't make any changes to that, so that's moot.
Um, so take, call for a vote, Tom?
I have the same, I have the same, I have the same concerns that we have to allow the public to give them a general idea of what their possible tax increase will be. That's just my only concern.
Thank you. Tom?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Carol?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Ginger?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Do we have any other public comment? Do my formality here?
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, okay?
Okay.
Second, Tom.
I'm sorry, who seconded?
Tom.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, everyone.
Okay, bye-bye.
Bye.